Sorry about the wait, you are live.
Chair Lawrence, you may begin.
Thank you, I'm going to call this meeting to order, this is the July 11th meeting of the Planning Commission, can we have a roll call please?
Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner Luceto?
Here.
Commissioner McGee?
Here.
Commissioner Miando?
Here.
Commissioner Ryland?
Here.
Commissioner Markey?
She has resigned. Commissioner Clow and Commissioner Smith are both online. And you may unmute in order to speak.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
And Commissioner Clow?
Here.
You have a call, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I want to note that Chair Clow, since she is participating remotely, I am operating the meeting today and she will vote as necessary on any items. Commissioner Lucero, will you lead us in the pledge?
You will go pump on time and be voted out instead of the fourth test.
Accident. This photo of the sound of the scene in Red Pepper. You know, this.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucero. Next, we have approval from agenda, I believe there are changes from staff?
Yes, Madam Chair, we'd like to postpone.
It's the findings of fact and conclusions of law for the height.
Variants.
The findings and conclusions for case 2024-7751.
Right, until the August meeting while we continue to work on those findings.
Till the August meeting. And also to note, I believe this had been changed, but it had not been changed when I printed my agenda, that the June 6 minutes are postponed till August as well, correct?
That's correct.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with those amendments? Or do we have any other changes from the commission? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Again.
Commissioner Smith?
Hi.
Commissioner Luceto?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Miando?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryland?
It's Ryland, yes.
Ryland, my apologies. Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the minutes from the May 2nd, 2024 meeting, are there any changes from staff?
Madam Chair, no.
Are there any changes from the commission? Or is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Lawrence?
I don't usually vote on.
My apologies. Commissioner Luceto?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Miando?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryland?
Yes.
Commissioner Clow?
I wasn't present for that.
Commissioner Smith?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you, next, we have approval of findings and conclusions, first case 2024-7951-2768 Aguafreya Street Certificate of Compliance, anything from staff?
Madam Chair, no.
Anything from the commission? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Miando?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryland?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Clow?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and then we have the findings and conclusions for case 2024-7750, the Meridian Bas Solares Medical Center sign area variance, anything from staff?
Madam Chair, no.
Anything from the commission, if not, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Miando?
No.
Commissioner Ryland?
Yes.
Commissioner Clow?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Luceto?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee? Motion passes.
Thank you, that brings us to our old business, which includes cases 2023-7079, 2023-7662, and 2023-7663. To recap where this was left, this was heard at a prior hearing, we had the staff report presentation by the applicant, and it was open to public hearing at that time. We postponed after that during commission discussion with some additional questions for the applicant, and thank you for coming back, and I'll turn it over to the applicant to address those questions to start us off, please.
Please raise your right hand, state your name and address for the record. You solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth, and nothing but the truth, and do this under the penalties of perjury. It's remaining or sworn in.
There we go. So Chair Lawrence, planning commissioners, thank you for having us back. I'm gonna see if I can get this shared. And I think I'm all hooked up, maybe somebody? The screen went black, I don't know if we're making progress or if that's trouble. Thank you all for your patience. So we're here to respond to some requests for additional information, and what I thought I would do, because it's been about six weeks since we last met, I would just go ahead and do a quick recap. So, and I think this slide probably was the last slide that we showed in our presentation, so I just start there. So, we're asking for three things, we're asking for development plan approval that would be conditioned on if variances are not granted, then the staff would have the ability to administratively look at a redesign, was one of the items that we talked about, the other two are the variances, one is setback variance, and the other is a slope variance. So what we did when we ended the last presentation is we talked about these two variances that were previously granted for the Beaver Toyota project, and we compared that with what we were doing, and that's what this slide is. So what we're proposing is a residential community, 141 units, on 8.55 acres of open space, and we have 300 parking spaces, we have a significant redesign of the roadway, that being the I-25 Frontage Road, at the developer's cost that would otherwise be financed by public dollars. And we also include the Herrera pedestrian connection, as we discussed, all the way from Surrius Road and the Frontage Road up to Herrera. And of course, in this case, these variances are pending approval, and in the Beaver Toyota case, those variances were granted. We also have a little bit of new information that we didn't know about until just a few days ago, and that there was a slope variance granted in 2020 for a very similar situation right across Surrius, associated with the Soul One project across the street. So we'll talk a little bit about that. One of the things that were requested that really don't have much to do with the variances, but were of interest to the Planning Commission, was defining what was two-story and what was one-story. So this particular map does that, so if you look at sort of the fuchsia color, those are the one-stories units, and then if you look at the orangish brown, those are the two-story units, just to help give some perspective on what you're gonna see in some of these 3D images, and again, this was in your additional information packet. The other thing that was requested was a better understanding of the landscaping and the landscape density, and so I think this, just by turning everything off other than the trees and the shrubs, this shows what that density is. One of the things I do want to point out is that the Land Use Department, via Lawrence, had asked us to reduce our shrubbery, and so we did reduce that shrubbery about, by close to 40%. And so this new design reflects that request based on just being more responsible with water, so I just wanted to point that out as well. There are significantly more trees after this development is put in than the trees that are there now. The other discussion was a little bit of an understanding about the patios, and so what I wanted to do is, while this was in your packet before, I wanted to hit this again, because this illustrates in the sort of olive area what the private patio spaces are compared to what is in the darker green on what the open space is. So just try to put that in perspective, so if you think about a typical multifamily apartment project, where you have a three-story walk-up, which is typically what you have, most of those units have no outdoor patio or no outdoor space, all of these units do. So I think that's just, you know, kind of worth pointing out. The next slide is an example, of course, this is not Santa Fe style, but this is the developers' projects and product in other locations, to just give you an idea of some of the spatial size and how these patios might be used. Okay, so this, we had some good feedback from the commission, and the discussion was trying to get a perspective on what you're doing. So we put together a 3D massing diagram or a massing model, and this gives a good idea of what the development is, this is obviously bird's eye, we'll get into what you're seeing at car level here in a moment, but the important piece, I think for this is, and I don't think my cursor is showing up, but if you look at this intersection, so to the left is the I-25 Frontage Road, and then to the right is Surrius, and this is the corner and interchange that's the most visible. And you can clearly see the distance from that interchange back to where the project starts, and that's all because of the New Mexico Department of Transportation right-of-way, which is almost 200 feet to the property line in the longest area. So I'm gonna kind of rapidly go through these next slides, because these were in your presentation, but they're here for us to discuss after. This is the entrance off of the roundabout, and just give you a perspective looking north. This is just a little bit closer in. And this is looking towards the northeast, same kind of general area. So the next slide is closer to what's important to this commission, and this is again that intersection at Surrius and the I-25 Frontage Road. And we're still a little bit bird's eye here, but the purpose of this is to show that there's a significant berm here, and we'll get into that with some of the photographs again in a moment. This is as we're heading north off of Surrius, this is the emergency access road into the site. And again, it is just for emergency purposes. But again, if you look at the setback, quite a setback, and you can see the screening walls as well in this picture. More or less the pedestrian level, looking at that interchange at I-25 and Surrius. Another shot of that, so if you look at the homes beyond, the massing model is in orange, the two-story is what you see the most prevalent, but there's also one story in there, so these are not sticking up, they're not reaching out and grabbing you like, let's say, a three-story apartment project might or would. Just another perspective going up Surrius. The bird's eye coming back, and again, we can refer to these as we have questions. This would be sort of car level. This area right here, as you go by the access drive, is likely the most visible that you're gonna see in the whole, in all of these photographs, so if you're kind of wondering. We're a little further up, and now heading south, and you're kind of looking to your right, and you're not seeing a lot. I also want to point out the power lines, because the power lines are roughly where the property line is, so just to give you some perspective, again, they're pretty far back off the right-of-way. And then this is right at the interchange again. So the next slide is a video, and this is as you're sitting in a car. And I'm gonna come back to that after we look at some sections, but I'm just gonna go ahead and play the video in totality, so you can just kind of get a feel for how it looks, how it feels. And so that corner, that intersection, it's not very tall, a lot of screening going on there, as you get a little further away from the corner, there's that little bit of area between the access drive and the berm. And these are two-story units that you're seeing at the tallest level, and then we're past the site. That differently, how about this? Okay, so now I want to just show a few photographs, and then we're gonna come back to that video just with a little bit of perspective. So in your packet, we took some photos, and we just tried to stand in a couple locations, and then take some shots at what the existing conditions were. So here's photos looking northwest, and what I want to point out is you can see the power lines, and then you can see that berm. It's a pretty significant berm. This is very close to the intersection, it's on Surrius, but just maybe 50 feet off of the intersection. So this is a step back, this is in the interchange, and this is just to give a measurement, an idea of what the height is at the Surrius Road point roughly to the top of that berm. So again, eight feet, quite a bit of screening. And this is just another shot of that, looking a little bit further towards the Herrera Drive area. So now, and I think this is important particularly to Commissioner Miando, what, how do things look from the inside out? So I'm living there, how am I screened from Surrius instead of the other way around? So this photo is looking southeast, again, current elevation, current conditions, you're gonna see in a moment that we're dropping this elevation even more. And the interchange is, if you can see the signs in the distance, interchange is just a little bit to the left of that, kind of where that telephone pole, or the electric pole rather, is. You look to the right, that definitely shows you where the interchange is. So this again is looking southeast, a little bit further back. And then the last photo, just roughly where we were standing taking these photographs, it's around 10 feet from that location to the top of the berm. And so these next, these two next slides are probably the most important part of all of this, and these are in your packet as individual slides, so they're a little easier to read, but just because it's difficult when you're going through all these slides, I tried to consolidate them. And the importance here is if you look down at the key, so you see a one, a two, and a three, and then you can read the sections one, and two, and three, and the sections that the commission is most interested in because of the setback variance request from Surrius Road, is gonna be two and three on this particular slide. And if you start looking at these, and looking at the distance in the view angle, especially as you start looking at section two, you can see how much lower the homes are than that, than the actual visual view angle, so you're kind of looking over those roofs. Now, as you go to section three, we have a two-story house in that particular section, and so you see a little bit more of that. But again, these homes are tucked well down in behind the berm. And as you look at the existing grade line that's dotted versus the grade line after we're done with our grading and drainage program, you'll see we're dropping those units, and in several cases even further, not in every case, but in many cases. So I think that, I'm just gonna kind of, you know, I know that you've had a chance to look at your packet, but the yellow view angles weren't necessarily in that packet. So as we move around, again, you have a similar story to the areas that are closest to that intersection. As we get to sections five, section six, section seven, you know, six is still pretty well hidden, but once we get to seven, that's getting close to that access road, and that's where you see more of the unit. The other thing that I would go ahead and point out, and we'll kind of recap this again, the distance from the car, especially as I look at four or five back to the house, it's a long way, it's gonna be the longest setback anywhere from that interchange all the way up to Airport Road. Okay. So now I'm going to attempt, this is the video again, see how the technology works, I'm gonna stop at a few key locations. So this particular location, I think, is important, because I'm in the middle of the interchange right now. And so again, as you looked toward the development, you don't even see, you know, a full story. Even when you're looking towards the two stories, now as we get a little further down. So now I'm through the interchange, it's the same thing. So this small area here, as I discussed earlier, almost by the site, is the area by that access drive, those are two two-story units, that's the most visible view that you'll ever see of the buildings, and as you know, if you're in a car, you're going by in a hurry. If you're like me, maybe too much of a hurry. So I just want to revisit two slides, just to kind of recap what we talked about before. This particular slide demonstrates what the right-of-way looks like from the intersection at I-25 Frontage Road. Doesn't quite get all the way up to the Airport Road, but it shows you the two kind of average distances from the property line back to the face of the road. And so as we look above the site, all the way to Airport Road, it's 45 to 60 feet. If we look just from the Arroyo to the intersection at I-25 Frontage Road, substantially more, 88 to 200 feet, and this is the area, of course, we're asking for an 11-foot setback variance. The other thing I pointed out the last time is that, for reasons that we haven't determined, the buildings there right along Surrius in front of Walmart also do not meet code, and they're, of course, were built after that time, so there may have been a variance granted or something when arrived there. But they only have a 24-foot setback when a 45-foot is required. So this is just the more, you know, demonstration of that, looking at the 34-foot setback line versus the 45-foot setback line, so 34 is what we're able to meet in all cases, and that's why we're asking for the variance that we're asking for. So just switching gears a little bit, what we discovered was that the, and actually depending on if it's to the right, the graded area, that's the Soul One multifamily project, to the left, where the white arrow is pointing and saying that a slope variance was granted in 2020, it was supported by staff, and it was approved by the Planning Commission, that was associated with what they call the Abacus Project, and so that's all retail-oriented. The reason for that particular variance has a lot to do with why we're asking for a variance. And maybe we didn't explain this really well before, so I wanted to try to explain it a little bit better this time. If we look at the red line, that was the South Bank of the Arroyo at the time. What had happened, of course, that was before the Surrius Road Bridge was put in, and all the Surrius Road improvements were done. After they put in the Surrius Road Bridge and the Surrius Road improvements, that channel was redirected, and it's, of course, the blue line, and then we had these slope remnants. And so to the left on our site, we've got circled, that's our around 4,700 square feet of slope greater than 30%, which we're asking for a variance. To the right, they had a similar issue, because that was the remnants of the bank. And when they went in to basically do their LOMAR, their map revision to bring the floodplain up, because now the Arroyo had been moved, they had the same issue that we had. So I just wanted to point that out, that even after the 2012 date, when the criteria for variances were changed, the hurdle was raised, this was 2020, there was a variance granted, so similar conditions, similar situation. We also will be doing a CLOMAR and a LOMAR and a map revision, we'll have to raise our site for Phase Two, two to six feet along where that Arroyo area is, in order to get that up out of the floodplain. This is just a recap, so this shows our little area of variance, that remnant that we've talked about. The last thing, and I won't go into this, of course, but we included in your packet, if it's convenient or useful, some findings of fact and conclusions of law for consideration that are just based on our criteria. And then we'd like to conclude our presentation the same place we started, again, we feel like this project is a good project, and why is it a good project? Well, it wanted to address housing needs in the city of Santa Fe. It's a product that allows individuals to have the opportunity to be in a home environment with their own backyards, even if they're smaller, it's their own private space, instead of being in a three-story walk-up apartment. It has less parking spaces than the previous approved use, it has more open space. And really, I think it can't be overlooked that the road improvements to that interchange are significant, over several million, it's at least $2 million, that's being very conservative, it's closer to two and a half, and it's gonna solve a lot of the problems and the issues that are currently being experienced at that Surrius Road and I-25 Frontage interchange. And again, the developer will be carrying those costs that would otherwise end up being a public-funded expense. And so we'll stand for questions without additional information, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and we will open it up to any other questions or discussion at this point that commissioners have. I have one question. I, I have one question to get us started. And in preparation for this meeting, I did spend a lot of time looking at, you know, our criteria for variances. And I was wondering if you or someone from your team could speak just a little bit more. The setback variance has the criteria that the special circumstances make it infeasible for reasons other than financial cost to develop the property in compliance. I, I feel like you have done a good job of addressing the other potential criteria from my perspective. But I was wondering if you could speak to that anymore, say anything else to support your case in that regard.
Well, I think, and here's, I guess, and Carl, of course, if you have some, something to add. But what I would think in this case is that the infeasibility, the issues that are different, that are unique to this site, to this location, to this land, has to do with the right of way that the NMDOT had, basically it's a taking, if you will, from the existing land and the existing landowner. So that's an existing condition. In our view, that combined with the floodplain issues, combined with the amount of road or land that we're losing. So this is a 19-acre site. And once we put in the drive, the Furnage Road, in the way that the NMDOT wants us to do it, we're going to be about 10 developable acres north of that drive. And so again, that's a special condition solving a problem. And we think that that should play into these circumstances.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have any other question? Mr. Summer, would you like to address that?
Yes, Madam Chair. I haven't been sworn in. I don't know if they swear in lawyers that you're in. Do they? Go ahead. Twice.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Carl Summer, Post Office Box 2476, Santa Fe, in Mexico.
You solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, and do this under the penalties of perjury?
Yes.
Mr. Summer is sworn in, Madam Chair.
I would just like to add just a little bit more to the feasibility issue. The setback variance, if not granted, and you, you have that setback, we lose about 16 units along that. And the reconfiguration of this for this kind of product does affect its feasibility in order to be able to construct this product on this site with all the other limitations that Brian indicated. We're losing about a third of the site to right of way. We've lost a, about a third of the site to the north to floodplain and, and open space areas that are not developable. And so our ability to do this with this product and this design is greatly affected, it greatly affects its feasibility. You can imagine that 16 units out of pro forma, you all, or some of you are all in the real estate business. That is not a small number and it's not purely financial. There are three factors at work here. One is the right of way, the other is the open space, which squeezed this property down. And the ability to, to produce this kind of product is a question of feasibility. Now, I say that because you all are faced with this question a lot. And the code doesn't give us a hell of a lot of guidance as to what does feasibility mean? And I would note that the, I think there's an argument that somebody can say, well, it's driven by your design. You know, your design is what creates the problem. Well, in some senses, that's always the case. In the case across Sarrius Road, where the variance was granted on the basis, and it had the exact same criteria. This is not, let me digress. When the, the variance was originally granted on this property, there was slightly different criteria. The one in 2020 was the exact same criteria and the exact same question of feasibility. And that was driven by their desired design, you know, fundamentally. But their argument was exactly the same as ours. I mean, you could always say, hey, look, this is, this is a design problem. That's always the case in some sense, and our code is not well drafted for you all to help, to decide and for us to comply with. I just point that out as a, a matter of looking at this question of feasibility. I hope that was helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Summer. Other questions or discussion from any commissioners? Does anyone have something to say? Commissioner Miranda?
Clarification on your own point for your original question. So you were parsing the two different variance requests and, and specifically asking for more clarification on the setback, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I have to say, I feel similarly that the other variance criteria, applicants provided criteria for approval is easier for me to get to. I guess, I, I'd like to ask a question of staff. Does staff or if technical review was available, could staff speak at all to the the statements made previously of, of how this Arroyo was diverted? And there was a previous variance approval and, and all that, just how, how staff views that?
I cannot talk to the terrain management section and, and Dee is, is not online. I can't talk to the setback variance only. The hard part for looking at a variance is, especially with something like this, is this is a design of their own making. Okay. If I have a canvas and I'm the artist, I get to decide what's on that, that canvas. The same thing applies here. If I decide to design something that requires a variance, then that, that's going to be the hardest part to meet the variance criteria. Because there are other avenues that may eliminate the need for a variance as opposed to being sprawled out, you can go vertical. You still have the same amount of dwelling units, maybe more. This is just one design, one product, one marketing project of an application. But this design requires a variance. It's not the only design that can be built on the property that may not need a variance.
Thank you. Like to ask a question of the applicant.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
First off, the documentation is very good. It gives us a very good idea of what you're proposing. From my standpoint, I would agree that on the, the basis of the location of the Arroyo, I'm much, I'm, I'm closer than the setback. And so the way I would see it, I, I understand what Carl's saying. We're basically parsing. We cannot approve a variance if the site condition is merely financial. It's merely that there's something on the site that incurs a cost that, that kills it. I would agree that my own finding of that piece, it, it, it is, it's vague in that all it says is it can't be financial. The where does, where does that stop? I guess Carl has said a piece to that. The way I see it, it, it does seem like the product, and I recognize that it's new to this area and maybe beneficial. The product is making it difficult in that the intention of making these smaller yards is making it harder to pencil out density. Is, is there, is there anything you could offer in studies of anything that was partially detached or was there any? Did, did you look at anything else and are there reasons that isn't in front of us?
Well, the, the client, Kevin, this is the product they build, the build to rent product, which I think does have a lot of advantages. Okay, that's, that's a conversation worth having. But if you look at the way it's laid out, it's pretty tight, right? So because of the fire lane requirements, the drive requirements, the setback issue really cannot be avoided with that, as Carl said, really wiping out enough units that it's no longer feasible. And as the developer's already taken on quite an expense to make the road improvements, I mean, if we didn't have that, maybe we'd be having a different discussion, but that is part of the, the total equation. If, if a person or if one was to do, you know, three-story walk-up, the drive-by that you saw would be drastically different. The impact on the area would be drastically different, even if it would be allowed by right. It is not, there would be a lot more people that would have trouble with that, and it would be allowed by right than this. And that's maybe a, I think, a point worth considering.
Thank you. The, I guess the other question I'd have relates to the elevations. So there was a lot more documentation, it's much more masked. Is there a re, redefining of that? Do you want to talk about that at all, just in terms of, yeah?
So based on the time that we had between here and the last meeting, we chose to stick with amassing because as we had discussed that we are proposing that we work out the architecture with, with staff administratively and make sure that there's something that they're satisfied with. I think that's a longer discussion and longer than what we had between the last meeting and this meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Landby, did you have something?
Thank you, Chair Lawrence. Commissioner Miranda, Dee is on the line now, so you can ask the question.
Our terrain manager.
So Dee, thanks for being on. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thanks, thanks very much. So, yeah, the, the question I have here is basically if you can speak at all to the, how staff views relocated Arroyos and the sort of hieroglyphics that are partially left behind in terms of slope. It does seem like there was, there's a track record of approved criteria other places this has happened. If you could speak to that at all.
I, I'm sorry, Commissioner, and I'm sorry, what are you saying that you believe that they are rerouting the Arroyo in this case?
No, that the Arroyo has already been, that what was presented to us, that the Arroyo has been rerouted and that there's slope on property that's from the previous location. And there's, this same Arroyo seems to have been handled with a variance on, on the adjacent property. So I don't know if you can see the slide up there, the, the blue line being the current path of the Arroyo, the red line being the previous. The red line is where they have offending variance slope on their property that they would like a variance for.
So the Arroyo was never, was never along that red line. It was just, that's just where the slopes were? Because I, I don't recall that the Arroyo was, I, I had never been informed that the Arroyo was relocated at some point in the past.
Perhaps the applicant can speak to that as well?
I've been asked, Ron, to give a little bit of history on that Arroyo and what happened over the years there.
Just, just for courtesy's sake, sorry, Dee, is there anything else you'd want to add before we go back to the applicant there?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Thank you so much.
Please raise your right hand, state your name and address for the record. You solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, and do this under the penalties of perjury. Mr. Bohannon is sworn in, Madam Chair.
Um, Ron Bohannon, registered professional engineer, City of what we did is we started looking at this Arroyo from a historical standpoint. We started looking at what created.
Can you speak louder, please?
Sorry, thank you. Again, Ron Bohannon with Tiar West. We started looking at this Arroyo from a historical standpoint. And what you have in Arroyos over time, and we're talking geological time, is you have these alluvial fans that have created this. And so this Arroyo over time was an alluvial fan. Uh, and that alluvial fan is what created that red line. What created the issue then was when Sarrius Road was put in place. It affected the overall floodplain and pushed that floodplain away from the red line to the north. Uh, and that's what also created the need for the Arroyo improvements on the east side of Sarrius that created that need for stabilization of this Arroyo and actually protection of the bridge, bridge elements of Sarrius Road. And when we started putting all this together was, because what the commission asked for was, how did this come about and was there a context of this remnant piece? And so that's what made us start looking at that remnant piece. And so with that, we started looking at it and said, no, this was really part of a remnant of this Arroyo through this long area. And that's when we started looking and found that there was a variance that was issued on the east side of, of Sarrius Road for that exact same reason. And so what we're looking at is one of the things I understood from the commission last time was, how is this context altered with this fact that has been presented over time? And that's what's, that's what's changed all this. And so it is a remnant piece, but that's the history as best we could determine is how it got created and what's left of it. Be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bohannon. Commissioner Miranda, do you have any additional questions on that?
Do you, would it be instructive to look at the proposed grading on how you're resolving the, the portion with the variance? Because the spirit of the variance in this case is one, that we don't disrupt land that's needed for water retention and to avoid degradation from water flow, right? So the piece that if it's true that, that, you know, what you're saying, that, that does speak to part of it. But I, I suppose, I, I think it would be good to look at the proposed grading to just talk about that there, there is no increased speed of flow in this area or that kind of thing. You could just walk us through what your grading looks like in that area.
Yes, Madam Commissioner, we can. What we have done is we have graded this site to where we can can you hear me? Yeah, followed the natural terrain through this area. Also, part of this was, this whole area around this site had been graded previously through this history with the development of the Beaver Toyota site as well. And so what we tried to do is preserve as much as that as we could. In phase two, we have graded part of the Arroyo to bring that floodplain back out of that Arroyo. So there's no, if your question is, is there any potential of velocities and flow impacting that? No, there is not. Uh, and we've actually submitted the floodpoint, the CLOMAR to a Dee Messenger's office as well. And we've already, we've demonstrated it to ourselves and we're ready to submit that to FEMA. I hope I answered your question. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Landby.
Thank you, Chair Lawrence. I just wanted to let you know that Commissioner Smith has had his hand raised. And also just to correct for the record, Dean, Debe Gessler is the full name of our engineer that responded to Mr. Miranda's question.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Smith, please go ahead.
I just want to make sure that Commissioner Miranda has finished before I, I had a different question entirely.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just remind me, I'm, I'm interested in, in social impact among other things, along with environmental impact in the code. What, what are, what are the proportion of affordable rentals in this, in this development? And also if there's been payment in LOF, what is the payment? I'm just interested to know that for fuller context.
Mr. Nenner, can you address that?
Yes, Chair Lawrence and, uh, Commissioner Smith. So, uh, we are going the fee in LOF route with this particular project. That number, um, because of when we submitted that, that number, and I think a year has turned over, it's in the neighborhood of $300,000. Um, it's probably gone up since we did that last calculation, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, do you have any other additional questions?
No, we're good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, any other discussion from the commission? Commissioner Reland?
How many units was it again? Total?
Total units is 141.
141, and you're saying that without the setback, you'll lose 16?
Approximately 16 units, yes, sir.
11% of your project.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Um, there's nothing else. We can entertain a motion. Ms. Manu Kerman, do you have something, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, uh, if I could just, um, uh, raise one suggestion, um, with respect to criterion two, uh, for both of the variance requests. I heard some testimony, uh, regarding, uh, why this project would be infeasible under the current, uh, under the code, uh, without a variance. I'm not sure that I heard, uh, testimony or evidence that, um, any C2 project would be infeasible, that it would need to be, um, this particular project. Uh, so it, it might be helpful for the record, uh, to request a little bit more uh, evidence or information, uh, from the applicant on that point.
Let me make sure that I'm clear. I'm Ms. Manu Kerman. What, what you are, what you are getting at is, um, whether any C2 project would be infeasible. Because the, the interpretation might be if there could be another C2 project there, then the variance would not be necessary.
Uh, Madam Chair, yes, that's, that's basically what I'm getting at. Um, the criterion states that the special circumstances have to make it infeasible for reasons other than financial cost to develop the property in compliance with the standards of Chapter 14. Um, it's not to develop the, the project in compliance or in, with Chapter 14. It's about the property. Um, and so I think that it, it might be helpful to, uh, get a little bit more evidence in the record about, um, why it would need to be this project. Or why, uh, why, why this project would be necessary to, um, develop.
Why a variance would be necessary for a C2 project on this site?
For a C2 project, yeah. So, um, and anyway, I, I don't want to, uh, put words into the, uh, commission's mouth or the applicant's, but, um, I, I just wanted to suggest that, that maybe a little bit more information on that could be helpful.
I, I think that would be useful information if anyone from the applicant team would be willing to speak to that at all.
Chair Lawrence and Commission, um, so it, it's similar to what Carl had talked about earlier. It's a difficult thing to address in that way. I mean, I suppose you could do a Beaver Motors Toyota. I mean, you want to do a car dealership or some other use because it's allowed. But, you know, what goes through my mind is part of what this is all about is what's good for the community, what's needed in the community. So sure, there's going to be other CT uses that could go there. Not nearly as attractive. We're not going to have any discussions about the view corridor with this commission if, if we did a Beaver Toyota site. It's there. I mean, it's by right. It's, the setbacks are there. So I'm, I'm just, you know, i- in my mind, to say any C2, we've got to prove that any C2 can't be here. Maybe that, I think that's just a, I, I think it's an unreasonable request. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Summer, would you like to address that at all? Okay.
Repeating myself, but I, I'll be very brief. This question of feasibility dogs every variance you have. If, uh, Ms. Manuk Herman's standard is the standard that you apply, no variance would ever be granted, ever, because there has been no variance, particularly the one across the way that meets that criteria. So you are left with, from your all standpoint, in light of all of this, to determine what feasibility means in this context. So, um, I, I, I believe that what, what we talked about earlier, this property, this product, um, and questions of feasibility are not just, uh, well, this setback line. It is all the factors that go into the feasibility of developing this product on this property. And I think that's the best we can do. This is an imprecise science and it is very difficult to apply and very difficult to comply with. Um, and I think that, I don't think there's any additional evidence that one can give you. You've got all the facts. You've got them all and we can't make up anything else. Sorry, but I think that's where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Summer. Ms. Landboy, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Lawrence. Um, so with reference to the Beaver Toyota that is being referred to, um, I actually worked with the applicant at that time on that site plan. And the issue at that time was to not have cars highly visible. And so the building itself was within that setback line, but it was mitigated by large areas of landscaping. And in addition, it was the minimal amount possible that would impact the overall streetscape along that site. So there were a series of open spaces with additional landscaping. And so the, there was not a line of houses the entire, you know, uh, setback, but rather there were open spaces and landscaping that helped to mitigate the overall visual impact in that particular case. And I would imagine that would be something we would try to do if there was another application of that nature.
Thank you, Ms. Landboy. Mr. Escabal, go ahead.
I'd like to add to that, um, and to add to, uh, our attorney's comments. The, um, the variance criteria when that original Toyota place got approved was under the old variance standards, which incorporated hardship. There were so many variances. Granted, they had to change the ordinance and we now have this variance standard, which is based on a special circumstance. The issue that's before you is whether or not a variance is needed on the property based on the design and project that before you. Can another project be developed on the property that doesn't require a variance? This design is a sprawling apartment complex. That is the product that they wish to sell and move forward. But the same product could go in a vertical situation, have the same amount of dwelling units, maybe more, uh, without a variance. So when dealing with that specific section of Chapter 14, when any other variant, when can you develop this property without a variance? The answer is yes, you can develop this property without a variance. The question is, do you want to variance, uh, develop this property without a variance? Because that's not my product. And that's the difference between what is being presented and what the ordinance is asking you to look at.
Thank you, Mr. Escabal. Missioners.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Lawrence, could you, could, could we pull up, uh, var, uh, criteria two?
Is it possible for staff to pull that up? Put it on the screen?
Yeah, it's her. Um, Commissioner Smith has his hand up, just to let you.
Commissioner Smith, if you would like to go ahead while we're getting that set up, please go ahead.
Sure, um, thank you. I was, I was just trying to understand, do we, I'm traveling, so I apologize. I've read all the material. Is there a staff recommendation on this?
The staff recommendation, Commissioner Smith, as of the last hearing that we had was to, uh, deny the two variances and approve the development plan. Those are the three items in front of us this evening.
I remember that, but do they have a recommendation on what we have to, before us tonight?
Um, Mr. Escabal, if you would like to address that, my assumption is that your recommendation has not changed, but I will let you respond to Commissioner Smith's question, please.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the commission, our recommendation has not changed for other variances.
Thank you, Mr. Escabal.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, does that help?
Yes, it does.
Do you have anything else?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay.
I might need some IT assistance. It is not showing.
Well, perhaps if you could just read it.
Criteria two of the variance standard says the special circumstances make it infeasible for reasons other than financial cost to develop the property in compliance with the standards of Chapter 14.
Chair Cloud, is, is that helpful? Do you need anything else?
Yeah, it is, it is helpful. I mean, unfortunately, it's pretty rigid and, um, it's hard to see how it would apply here, um, in terms of, because it's not infeasible to develop it another way. And, you know, I'm sympathetic with the applicant, but unfortunately, it's a very rigid, um, it's rigid, um, a criteria two is rigid. And I'm assuming that a, a property that could meet that standard if, um, you know, it, there was some feature of the property that made it impossible or infeasible to, um, to develop it in, you know, in any way. Um, but I think that the, as the variance criteria are written at this point in time, um, it's difficult to get a variance and, um, it's a gigantic hurdle. And it, you know, appears that, yes, other things could be done, um, to, in terms of developing the property without, um, addressing, um, a variance request for a setback and also a variant request for the 30% grade. Because it's a, it's very, very strict.
Thank you, Chair Cloud. Does anyone have anything else? Or would anyone like to make a motion on the first of the variances? We have two variances and then the development plan and we need to go through them in order.
I'd like to make one brief question of the applicant.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Hi, um, uh, if the, if a motion was made that, um, was to approve the slope but not the setback, would that make any difference to the applicant?
It, it does preserve units, um, whether it's enough units to do the project, that is the question. And I think, I think we have, um, you know, we've made all the points about being squeezed and why we're squeezed in this particular project. But yes, anything would help.
Commissioner Reland, go ahead.
I'm just having a hard time understanding where 11% of your development is going to make it infeasible for you as a developer when you're developing a site that's going to be a leasehold for the tenants that's going to continue to generate a annual income for your company. So can you address that at all?
Yeah, it, it really is just, um, you know, investors, lenders, as you know, uh, being in that business, Commissioner Reland, and thank you for the question, you know, they look at a certain return. And if there's, if you don't have that return, you know, they're not interested in either financing or present project. What's eating into the basis of this project in a significant way is the DOT requirements. So the improvements that we're making to the intersection are needed. They're helpful, but they're expensive. And it also cuts a big chunk of the property off that would be contiguous with the build to rent portion of the property. So you lose the ability to develop that. It's too small to do housing units from that point on. You compare that or combine that again with the area that we cannot reclaim uh, as buildable area from a, a LOMAR, a, a MAP revision. Um, it just, it's very tight. And that's, that's what's driving that. So 16 units is significant. It, I can tell you, it will impact the performance because of the, the cost of the project. It's expensive. It's expensive to do business here, as you know.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Escabal.
So, um, as I reiterated early in the first session, since we know that time is, um, has a big impact on all developments as opposed to infrastructure developments, conditions of approval, time is probably the killer of all projects. Uh, I would still make the offer and recommendation that should the, the planning commission accept staff's findings and deny the variances, that the applicant, that the development plan be approved subject to the condition that they work with staff to redesign that project and allow, uh, the land use director to approve that site design without having to come back to the planning commission as long as it complies with Chapter 14.
Thank you, Mr. Escabal. And I believe that was included in the conditions recommended in the staff report too, correct?
Yes.
Commissioner Miranda?
Um, just, uh, make a brief statement before I make this motion, which is just that, um, I think much like the architecture that was originally presented, the mix of units, it, it, it also has a similar aspect where what's been done before is attempting to be done on, on this site in Santa Fe without enough consideration of the code. And really what, what is often seen in cases. So my, my suggestion would be to be more flexible in the mix of detached units. Not that they can't have attached units, but it seems to me, looking at the site plan, that this could be reworked where you have more units, more density, and you meet the code. Uh, you're, you're just not all going to be detached. It's going to be a little more of a mix. And I, I don't, it makes it hard to approve the variance because that seems so obvious. Frankly, that, that's really the problem here. So I'm going to make a motion in case 2023 7079, um, to approve, uh, the development plan.
Um, let me check with legal staff if we need to address the variances first.
Oh, I thought, I thought it was the other way around. Oh.
Ms. Manuk Herman, Mr. Escabal, do we need to do the variances first? Because they affect the decision of the development.
Madam Chair, that is correct.
Okay.
Apologies. So in 2023 7662, uh, the bungalows on Curius variance for setback, I'd like to make a motion for denial.
Second. Okay, can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Miedon, though?
Yes.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Cloud?
Um, yes, but I'd also like to say for the record, um, I was not present for the first hearing on this matter, but I did review, um, the tape of the whole hearing and I've read, um, the whole report. Um, so just so the record's clear on that. And I've, um, though, yes, and I'm sorry, I have to, but that one criteria is extremely, um, rigid and clear.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucetto?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Motion to deny passes, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
This next, I, I understand that you denied the variance. I'm not, I'm not about that.
We still have one variance in front of us, Mr. Summer. Let us, let us handle the Let us, let us handle the variances. And then if you have something regarding the development plan specifically, I'll let you speak.
And, Madam Chair, my motion for case twenty twenty-three seven six six three, the bungalows on Surios variance for slopes, I'd like to make a motion for denial.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Smith, seconds. Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Reland?
No.
Commissioner Cloud?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucetto?
No.
Commissioner McGee?
No.
Commissioner Meadondo?
Yes.
We have a tie.
I have way too many ties when I chair these meetings. I am going to vote yes.
The motion passes.
Mr. Summer, did you want to say anything before we consider the development plan?
Just making one observation, the denial of both those variances, if you look at the development plan, the forty-seven hundred square feet sits right in the middle. It changes the entire circulation. And units in that entire area are gone because you can't develop around that. And then the units along the setback are gone. So that means the basic numbers of the development plan completely change. And we, I don't know what we would come back and we'd have to change the product, probably change the numbers, change everything. So I'm not sure what we get or what we're going to. If we walk in with the development, the development plan approved, the entire circulation and all the numbers are gone. So I don't know what that gets us. I don't know what that, what we're expected to do at that point. So I'm, I'm making that as an observation. I don't know what, where we would go with that.
Thank you, Mr. Summer. My observation is that you wouldn't have to see us.
See you again because we would be coming in probably with an entirely different product, probably an entirely different circulation, entirely probably higher density, as you suggested. And that's going to change everything. I don't, I don't know what we get out of a development plan approval.
Thank you, Mr. Summer.
Madam Chair, just to clarify that, the land use director does have the ability to make these types of modifications. So we would just be sending it back through the DRT process to re-review anything that needed to be looked at, but it would still comply with the code. And we'd be looking at more of a site design as opposed to a development plan approval before the planning commission. So it would fall in line.
Thank you, Mr. Escabal. Do we have a motion on the development plan?
Yes, Madam Chair. In case twenty twenty-three seven zero seven nine, bungalows on Surios development plan, I'd like to make a motion for approval with staff's conditions of approval.
Second.
Commissioner Lucetto?
Yes.
Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner Meadondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloud?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Chair Lawrence. Just one quick clarification. Staff would like to understand the wishes of the board relative to the pitch of the roof and what kind of guidance we should provide to the applicant.
Would anyone like to speak to that?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the question. The, the pitch of the roof, there's nothing inherently wrong with the pitched roof concept. To me, it's the proportion that's seen in the two-story units in their footprint is very hard to meet Santa Fe style. It will be able to meet the point system, but it just inherently looks kind of strange. And it, you know, Mr. Summers made the comment about, you know, what are we getting in this? And I hear you, you're not getting a, you're getting a development plan that you have to work with staff on. That, that's really what it is, right? And what we believe you have to work on with staff on is being less rigid about your style of your product and the mix of your product. You can have that detached product, but not completely on this site because it clearly didn't work. So you're right, it would have to be more dense and there's probably going to have to be some element of more of a mixed site, a site that has some more like apartment buildings and then some attached buildings. And at this point, I'm just giving you like free architectural advice, right? But I don't know, that's what I'm doing. So, yeah.
Does anyone else have anything? Mr. Escabal?
Yes, and should I remind the applicant? You do, once we file the findings, you do have the right to appeal to the governing body. You have fifteen days from the date that those filings are made.
All right. Thank you all. That takes us through old business. We don't have any new business. Are there any staff communications?
Chair Lawrence, at this time, no, other than just a quick update that the, we are aiming for the zoning code hygiene, code hygiene update to be done by the end of the year. We're working with the technical committees. And with reference to the general plan, we had a kickoff meet and greet with the consultants. And once we get the purchase order done, because the fiscal year started July first, we weren't able to make the transition while finance was doing the closeout of the previous fiscal year government things. But anyway, we will be starting a kickoff with that. And in the near future, we're going to be engaging the planning commission in the fall to sort of provide an overview of the process and, you know, what the expectations are for phase one.
Great, thank you. And I just want to note, I believe this is the first planning commission meeting since Director Cluke resigned, and I just wanted to note that he'll be missed.
Absolutely.
Any matters from the commission?
I just want to say amen to what you just said. Jason was wonderful.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Any other matters from the commission? Commissioner Miranda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, you know, I, I think for staff and as we think about the code rewrite, I think it is, you know, this case particularly, but a couple recently are instructive to think about what our variance criteria is doing and not doing for us. But also, you know, there was a statement made previously about, well, what is the legal danger where you have cases where certain things were approved and then right next to them, they weren't approved? And in truth, the way I see it is the legal danger for the city and the process is actually approving things when they can be easily contested based on the criteria we have. And, and I think that is important for us to all understand because when those legal challenges happen, if, if you're wanting to encourage development, truthfully, nothing is worse. There is nothing that takes longer than a case that is effectively adjudicated because the decision didn't match the code. And there's, there's reasons why we have appeals to approve variances. And to me, in some cases, that's probably where we should look at it more in the code rewrite. And that's just my two cents on it. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else?
Yeah, I, I just want to say, and I've been saying it, that in terms of the rewrite, it would be good to look at some flexibility in, in variances for situations like this or sign variances. And it might be that, you know, the city really wanted to tighten it up so that there wasn't a lot of applications for variances. But I think it's something important to look at and just, you know, step back and see if it needs to be reevaluated.
Thank you, Chair Cloud. With that, we'll adjourn. Thank you all.